Good morning again, everybody. Finished out our public meeting that we had earlier and uh we're down in our regular meeting Commissioners Court Liberty County takes April ninth twenty twenty four. It's about nine oh seven AM. Uh the day after the eclipse. I'm glad y'all all made it, okay? All right, and it uh let the record show we have a form established. Uh Commissioner Kobowski, Commissioner Arthur, Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom. Uh Fisher Whitmire is is out today. A little on the ailing side, but feel sure to give him our best wishes and prayers that he'll get better. And uh this time, if you would all rise, we'll have our pledges leave, please some pledges.
Yes. Please face the American flag. I pledge the United States of America into the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God. This will be liberty and justice for all. Please face the Texas flag. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and the
And if y'all would pray with me this morning. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day as we thank you for each and every day this year. You wake us up. You allow us to put our feet on the ground and Lord made the first thing that we do when we do this is offer our praise to you for all the things that you've done for us, for all the wonderful blessings that you give us each and every day. For your guidance, Lord, for your your grace and your mercy. Lord, please be with us. We go through this meeting today and help us to make decisions that would benefit everyone. Lord, please be with our first responders. Sheriff's Department, Fire Departments, Constables Departments, men and women in uniform, the military, Lord, that they will be under your care, be under your umbrella, be under your protection each and every day, Lord. Lord, for our members that are ailing, that are sick, Lord, I please be with them. And Lord, if it's your will, get them healthy as you can, as quickly as you can, and bring them back to us. Ready to go. Lord, as we move forward through this year, there's a lot of things on the on the horizon and you know it way better than we do. And Lord, we just ask that you please guide us and give us the wisdom to do the best we can. Please watch over our loved ones, our schools, our churches. And Lord, please be watching over all of us as well. Jesus most precious name of prayer, amen. Well, let's see, we have notices and proclamations. And we've got the uh our friends with Bridge Haven Children's Advocacy Center here today. And we're going to proclaim that April twenty twenty four as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. So Rachel, come on up and visit with me. Well, tell us a little bit about what uh what y'all do over at Bridge Haven and uh
Well, Bridge Haven is a longstanding nonprofit that service serves Liberty and Chambers County. Uh we work in child abuse investigation. Uh sad reality that affects our community day in and day out. Unfortunately, I don't have great news because our members continue to grow as our counties grow and develop. Uh but we provide services that transforintic interviews, counseling services, family advocacy, um resources, referrals, things like that. So we just want to thank y'all for y'all's ongoing support, the commissioners' support, and as well as some of our volunteers here at your county and district attorney's office. And we hope to have that support continued and we appreciate y'all's time in looking out for the most vulnerable members of our community.
Well, thank y'all for all you do. It's it's kind of an easy job. Not by any means, and you need more people to help you support your cause. So you need volunteers as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, these uh anything from counseling all the way all the way down to just the care.
Right.
So if y'all never had that too, where's your new office located?
We don't, we're about to start our campaign for a new office, so. So we're still on Limpree Street in Dayton.
Okay, now right where you are.
Yep.
Okay, well, good thing. It uh the county grows, y'all grow and well, your care for the all the uh young ones that need our help grows as well. So the proclamation raises, whereas we all have a responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, uh members and citizens of Liberty County, to help to be healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for children. And whereas more than two hundred thousand children in Texas are reported as abused or neglected every year. Whereas safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults. No truer statements have been made there. Whereas safe and healthy childhoods help provide confident and successful adults. Whereas child abuse neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without clear resources and don't know how to cope. Whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Engaged in support, that's a key word. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support they need. They deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment. And whereas it is recognized that no one person can do everything, but that everyone can do something. And together we can create change for the better. And whereas effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations,
Law enforcement agency sheriff.
And business community. And now therefore, being known that I recount Judge Jane, I do, we're about to claim April twenty twenty four as Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month in Liberty County and urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families, activities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive. So that all children have the benefit of happy, healthy, and safe childhoods as well as a month of remembrance while children and families in Liberty County whose lives have been impacted by abuse and neglect. But I have been April twenty twenty four. I have to measure sport myself. Thank y'all again for all you do.
Thank you.
Get back and uh we'll get you straight stuff right here.
Let's do it, Peter.
Okay.
And that's what we use to hurt. Thank you.
All right. What you got to say?
I have a good these for y'all.
Really?
We have a Bridge Haven pin as well as a shirt pin, so do wear these for the month of April. We appreciate it. Some more information about Bridge Haven.
Good deal. Thank you.
I'm gonna leave that really quick.
Thank you. Bruce, be sure to put your pin on this morning. They all will get you one over there for you.
I'll get you.
Yeah. And uh get one for
I'm gonna leave them on there, Dad.
Good, okay. Thank you. All righty. The next item up is uh public comment. And Dee Dee, we didn't have anybody sign this morning, so we'll move right along. Uh number six is declare conflicts of interest. Anybody have any conflicts noted on the agenda that you need to note today? Or declare today. Hearing none, we'll move along to the consent agenda. See, Dwayne, you have a couple of add-ons, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh we got one thing with the J R E H A N S precinct five forty five hundred dollars. That one to D L P S auction services. Precinct one capital out of eight hundred thirty five thousand dollars.
How much money?
One thirty five, hundred thirty five thousand.
Okay. What'd you buy, Bruce?
Couple of tractors, twenty five horse John Deere, I mean a hundred twenty five horse John Deere and a seventy five horse uh Hugh Holler.
Wow.
Low hours, good condition.
Brady has some pretty good stuff comes across out here. Does, okay. Anything else on the consent agenda? Y'all have all had the opportunity to look over it besides the add-ons to consider.
Motion to approve the agenda, call for the add-ons.
There you go. Yeah, a motion from Bruce to approve consent agenda with the add-ons as noted, second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Likewise, nays, and that motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to the regular agenda. Um first things first, Melinda, come on up and visit with us. This is a purpose corrections considered and approved signing the demolition contracts on homes using the community development block grant disaster recovery uh from the general land office. This is for the CDBG DR project twenty zero one six six zero one three C zero nine five. They were approved in on the March twenty sixth court here at Commissioners Court meeting. Uh the contracts are in the packet for the following properties. Uh sixty two CR twenty five oh six in Harden, one eleven County Road twenty nine oh eight in Cleveland, one thirty eight County Road twenty five hundred in Harden, two thirty County Road twenty one twenty in Cleveland, three fifty County Road three forty two in Cleveland, five forty five County Road twenty six hundred in Cleveland, seven hundred County Road three forty nine in Cleveland, twelve eighty seven County Road twenty one sixty six in Cleveland, and one thirty nine County Road twenty five seventy four in Wright. And then there's nine oh seven County Road one twenty nine in Cleveland. So that take care of all those that we need to, you know, I know I said
It's not all of them completely, but these are the ones that you uh
Okay, that we
allowed us to um give them the contracts in this meeting. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's last meeting, although I was given the uh authority to sign.
Right, we still want to bring them in front.
We're still gonna bring them, yeah, for transparency sake, we're gonna bring along.
You agreed on the biz, so now these are the actual contracts with the companies that won the biz.
Right.
Making motion to approve.
And I also wanted to uh introduce everybody to Samantha.
Well, come on out here.
Her last name, but her last name is Merlock.
Matt.
Matt, see, I told you. She joined my office and she's going to try to help me with the floodplain administration. Um hopefully, I think I've got her swimming right now, but we'll get there.
Well, if y'all need some rubber boots, just let us know. We can work on a boat. I think Sheriff might let you borrow his airboat one day.
Thank you, John.
All right, so we have a motion from Bruce to approve these. Second from Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number two on the regular agenda uh from Mr. Brown over at the tax collector's office.
I'm here for it.
Hey, well, come on up. This is considering approved the overpay refund in the amount of forty five hundred ninety eight dollars and nine cents for account one seven one two three eight for customer K E Andrews.
Um this is just a typical uh refund. They had an ARB hearing. We received the decrease in value change after the statement. Original statement was already sent out, which created the overpay.
Okay.
Making motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Greg.
Thank you.
Thank you. To approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor? Aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number three, um was considering approved resolution authorizing Liberty County District Attorney's Office to apply for the grant for Operation Lone Star prosecution cost through the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division uh for the years of twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Grant number five two three eight two zero one. Purpose of the fund is to offset prosecution cost of operational star crimes. And since y'all got worried that uh you're not eligible for this.
She's not eligible for that. Uh I recommend taking no action on that street.
Okay. Yeah, motion from Bruce, second Leon, take no action. Any further discussions? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen. Uh number four for Ms. McCarty and Ms. Poston over in the county attorney's office. Consider and approve a resolution authorizing change in fee split between co-lead counsel for Liberty County in the in the Arqima Incorporated litigation.
Yes, um so I'm sure all of you are familiar with the litigation that we have against Arqima for damages to county grounds uh in precinct four. Uh this is just a resolution that uh authorizes our two co-lead outside counsel firms to change how they are splitting their return fees. This does not affect the county in any way. This does not uh change the amount of damages we may receive uh should we settle or go to trial and win a case. Uh this simply changes how those two firms split the fee.
Next motion, we approve.
Motion Leon, second Greg to approve. Any further discussion? Be a pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number five on regular agenda from Ms. McCarty and Mr. Poston, consider and approve down payment in the amount of twenty three hundred and forty six dollars and seventy nine cents to Carpet Giant for their replacement of damaged flooring of first floor at the county attorney's office under PO number eleven six five oh. Y'all need this, yeah.
And yes, this is the last step um that outside of the repair and very grateful for that. Uh but this is the last step until the first quarter went off and you move back on.
What is the last word?
I'm kinda enjoying having you right across the whole. Yeah. Okay. Is that Greg with the motion?
Yeah, Bruce.
Bruce?
Great, second.
Greg got the second? All right, so we got a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor of new carpet, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Thank y'all, gentlemen. Okay. By the way, what color is carpet? I need to find out about that.
Uh it is a yellow. Uh on the first quarter, we're getting rid of the orange carpet and the uh home and wood look final, very lovely.
We'll make sure it's not burn orange.
It's not.
Okay, all right.
But it's not marooning.
Okay, all right. Be with us.
It's after you. It's not a marker. It's the last, I know this.
Number six and number seven, I would like to uh leave those for the end of the uh agenda. And we will probably end up moving these to executive session at that time, but right now I would like to jump past six and seven at this at this time. Move on to number eight uh from Mr. Gott. Consider and approve pay request from Grant Works pertaining to the CDBG grant twenty six zero six six zero one three C zero nine five housing buyout as follows. It's on file ID Libco zero seven zero four, this Liberty title LLC purchase price is sixty five thousand six hundred thirty nine dollars forty nine cents plus an estimated closing cost of five thousand. Total is not to exceed seventy thousand six hundred thirty nine dollars forty nine cents. Homeowner relocation incentive five thousand would be paid at closing. Says it all pretty, but is there anything else to add to that? Okay.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce to approve. Second Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. We got a couple more of these. What I'm gonna do is for expediency. Well, number nine, consider approved pay request from Grant Works pertaining to the CDBG grant uh twenty zero six six zero one three zero zero nine five. It was housing buyout. Uh the purchase price a hundred eighty thousand, closing cost of five thousand. Total is not to exceed a hundred and eighty five thousand on this one.
Making motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion Bruce, second Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Number ten, once again, uh it's another buyout request from Grant Works pertaining to CDBG grant twenty zero six six zero one three C zero nine five. This is uh purchase price is forty four thousand seven hundred dollars. Uh estimated closing cost five thousand, total is not to exceed forty nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Homeowner relocation, same as five thousand, that'd be paid closing. Uh let's say the court.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce. I believe everybody's second reason on that. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eleven from Mr. C. Consider and approve payment to Mire McDow construction for reconstruction at the Dayton Annex in the amount of a hundred forty nine thousand seven hundred and ninety eight dollars and ninety two cents. Harold?
My understanding is, I think most everybody is back then, uh some furniture and equipment were damaged. That's been ordered. You know, so ought to be up to good shape. Uh this is the amount that was approved by the insurance company uh for the reconstruction. Uh we received, I think a hundred eighty six thousand or we got other, maybe eighty coming. But we have the money for this.
Yeah.
I think as far as I know, they're they're approved, but McDowell is. It's free to pay on what we can find.
And this was paid through Arpa?
No, insurance, oh yeah.
Insurance, that's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm I might add that it is looking very nice over there.
It is. Two things I can add that we might consider in the near future. One is some concrete replacement
Yes.
in the parking lot. And another thing is that uh where the old awning was in the back, if we could go back and put some kind of either standing seam or whatever cover up there.
I'll get some bids on it.
You did? Okay.
I'll get some.
Okay. And you know, some red iron over the existing red iron, you know, so.
Making motion to approve.
Third, motion from Bruce, second Greg to approve. It is looking really good too. The paint looks good. I mean, it looks like somebody lives there.
We just need to be a little bit choosier on our contractors, roofing contractors.
Well, yeah. Uh motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, Mr. C, considering approved change order from Mike Barnett Construction to furnish and install a knock box for the supply shed at three eighteen San Jacinto Street, Liberty, Texas for fifteen hundred twenty five dollars required by City of Liberty. And for the folks that don't know what a knock box is, Harold, can you tell them?
Yeah, it's a, we have one home building, I mean, it's a box outside that has a key in it.
Mm-hmm.
So the fire department has to come, they have to unlock it.
Okay, so they have a key to open the box that has a key. See there, that's
Making motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion from Bruce, second Leon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, Mr. C, consider Bruce listing bids for asphalt overlay utilizing Arpa funds. Uh that's pretty explanatory, but is that for all precincts or just?
I have both for everybody. It's uh this up in May, big first quarter of May, uh contract contract is up. And this, this is real, really, everybody with this Arpa contract will bid it with the Arpa requirements to bid it. And then if you, if you have Arpa funds, you can use it. Uh as long as the vendor, the vendor's order to is approved by the sales and it's standard. It's basically just renewing the one we already have. And like I said, it's not all just Arpa, but it will be available.
Yeah.
Because not everybody has Arpa, it's part of this.
Making motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce to approve. Further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen, Mr. C, consider and approve contract with fire control protection systems to provide fire alarm monitoring for the supply shed at three eighteen San Jacinto Street, Liberty, Texas. Annual cost is nine hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, I haven't talked to anyone directly. I heard this second or third hand, but one of the requirements for the city is we have that monitored. So this is somebody that was uh recommended to us, it's basically eighty dollars a month with one annual bill and nine sixty each year. Well, it's not bad idea to do it. Does this include the hardtail building itself or just? I think it was, I think it's just that building, I'll check on it. It'd be not say. I'll see what we take then.
Making motion to approve.
Motion Bruce to approve, second Greg. Any further discussion? Hearing none, call for vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Number fifteen, Mr. C, we're just wearing you out today, Harold. Uh consider approving the purchase of a twenty twenty four John Deere fifty seventy five E tractor from Shoppes, farm supply for forty eight thousand three hundred seventy four dollars and ninety seven cents. Less trade-in of a two thousand eight John Deere fifty five twenty five or ninety five hundred dollars. The Roden Beach Ford, this tractor purchase utilizing H G A C contract number GR zero one dash two zero.
Yeah, it's on an H G A C contract that's less than fifty thousand. It really didn't have to be put on for it. But the reason I put it on here was because of the trade-in, so you have to prove the trade-in.
Yeah.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second Greg. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen from Mr. Hunter, our constable in precinct five. Consider and approve donation from Anco Rentals LLC to Constable Precinct Five for K nine training.
What is that, cash donation? I'm looking for us. What's that? I'm looking for you in the forest. Uh I think this check is two thousand.
Okay.
I think it's go to awards trading program for the media officer.
Making motion to approve. Second.
Motion Leon, second Bruce to approve. Call for uh well, any further discussion? Call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, I'll move back to item number six.
We need to go into executive session, Jake.
Uh I'm gonna believe that we do, Leon, and matter of fact, I will go ahead and read item number six and number seven, so everybody be clear on that. Number six, consider approve resolution, make making findings in connection with a proposed Gemini Public Improvement District number related to the advisability of the improvements, the nature of the improvements, the estimated cost of the improvements, the boundaries of the proposed district, the method of assessment, and the apportionment of cost between the district and the county as a whole, making other findings related to the district. That's number six. Number seven is consider and approve resolution authorizing establishment of the Gemini Public Public Improvement District in Liberty County, Texas. So if this time I would like, uh, see to consider moving those two items into executive session. And we need to vote to move into executive session.
Make motion, we're moving to executive session.
Got a motion from Leon, a second from Greg, move to executive session.
Do we need a motion to move the two items?
Um, no. I don't know separately, but you do need to state what, uh, part of the code is authorizing.
Right. Now, the executive session is closed session, meaning will occur regarding the following matters pursuant to section five five one point zero eight seven for the Texas Government Code Economic Development Negotiations. For the Commissioners Court to discuss or deliberate regarding the creation of Gemini Public Improvement District in Liberty County, Texas. So we have a motion to second, move to executive session. Further discussion, call for vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Likewise, nays, okay, it is. Nine thirty eight. We're gonna move into executive session this time.
We're alive, Your Honor.
Good deal. Alright, it's now ten oh one AM, we're out of executive session, back in regular session. We have, uh, two items to consider regarding the executive session. One is, uh, item number six, and we moved, and item number seven is the other. Item number six on the regular agenda was considered and approved resolution, making findings in connection with a proposed Gemini Public Improvement District number related to the advisability of the improvements, the nature of the improvements, the estimated cost of the improvements, the boundaries of the proposed district, the method of assessment, and the apportionment of cost between the district and the county as a whole, and making other findings related to the district. So this is a resolution, okay?
Making motion to approve.
Okay, you got a motion from Greg.
Second.
Second from Bruce to approve this resolution, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, okay. Number seven is consider and approve resolution authorizing the establishment of the Gemini Public Improvement District in Liberty County, Texas. Again, this is a resolution.
We approve that all.
Motion from Greg, second from Bruce. Probably be no further discussion because we discussed it pretty well. Call for vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays, that motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.
Making motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce to adjourn, as always. Second from Leon, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
We are adjourned.